Okay, we're gonna start the meeting with the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We have a moment of silence, please? Okay, roll call, correct?
Counselor Chamberlain?
President.
Counselor Heisen?
Here.
Counselor Snyder?
Here.
Counselor Stickley?
Here.
We have four members present, we have a forum.
Okay, thank you. Let's see, counsel, it's been awhile, welcome back. You have had a whole month over the meeting minutes. And we have a motion to approve those?
I'll make a motion to approve them, mayor.
I'll make a motion to second the idea.
Who usually does the seconding?
Well, I have been, but I wasn't there, so I just didn't feel it was appropriate.
It's been too long, mayor, if you don't know how to second things.
But he's kind of still down from vacation. Okay.
Motion to approve the prior meeting minutes, we have Counselor Stickley and seconded by Counselor Chamberlain, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. And next on the agenda, we do have a gentleman here, John Miles, from the Historical Society. If you'd want to come up and just give us a brief little speech about what's happening.
Emphasis on brief.
No.
I do have a handout for...
We like handouts, we like colored pictures. Oh, there they are.
Yes, see?
Thank you.
You still taking care of my bird?
I'm sorry.
You still taking care of the red-tailed hawk for me?
Yes, sir. It's a prime attraction.
It's good. Thank you.
Mayor, members of council, I thank you for the opportunity to share this update on the activities of the Fulton County Historical Society and also some information on a special project that's involving our History Manor property on Monroe Street here in town. First of all, I want to say how much we appreciate the, what I believe to be an excellent working relationship that the Historical Society has with the city of Wausau. And we're involved in some joint things on occasion, and when we need support from the city for special events and things that we do, we've always had excellent response from that, and we appreciate it very much. So I'm gonna go over a few things that we've been doing as far as our activities are concerned, and then I want to focus on this project with the History Manor. So this summer, we've been opening the depot on the third Sunday of the month. Yesterday, actually, we had around 40 people go through the depot. That has to set a record. But, you know, it's very gratifying.
Are they local or out of town?
I'm sorry?
Local?
All kinds of people, I think, yeah. I think part of it is, we've really been trying to increase our presence on social media. We have a new part-time events manager who is a young gal who understands that stuff. She gives us all kinds of information, I have no idea what she's talking about, but apparently we're having some success in generating hits and everything on Facebook and that type of thing.
I saw a new sign outside the building also, so that probably would help.
That helped. We also took part in the tent sale on, what was it, Thursday and Friday?
Thursday and Friday.
And we did well, according to our, we also now have a new part-time business manager who's running the gift shop. She's done an excellent job. And as a matter of fact, if you're ever looking for anything that's related to Fulton County for a gift to give someone, come out there, because we've got a number of things that are Fulton County branded now, and we're adding things all the time that make excellent gifts. And she's doing a really good job, and she was there. And they promoted the depot being open at the sale also, so I think that probably helped. Okay? The Swanton Railroad Club is working with us to help us make sure the model railroad trains are running. They've been very, very helpful. They've got some suggestions on some things that we can do to upgrade that setup in there, and they're volunteering to help do that. So I'm looking forward to working with them and improving that layout as we go on. In February, we took possession of the Lauer Hill Meeting House on Road 21 west of town, just north of Route 28. That meeting house is the site of, if not the first, one of the earliest settlements in Fulton County. Now, we didn't really need another building, but we could not turn down that facility. So we have taken it over from the Reform Ananite Church. The original section of that building was built in 1865, and it's actually in very, very good shape. We were really surprised. So we want to celebrate not only that meeting house, but the Lauer Hill community around there. Although there was never a town, there were a number of businesses in that area, early, early settlers who had blacksmith shops, there was Jacob Weary's Cabinet Furniture Facility, all those things that promoted and made that community grow. So what we're planning right now is to do similarly to what we do with the depot and have it open on occasion on a Sunday or something, and prophesize it so people will know. However, this Sunday, July 23rd, we are having an open house at the Lauer Hill Meeting House from 1:00 to 5:00. And we encourage you to come out and see it. It is exactly like they left it when they walked out of it prior to the pandemic. They were down to about three or four elderly ladies in the congregation when the head office in Bluffton decided they needed to pull the plug on that facility, and they offered it to us. So eventually, we will do some things to spruce it up a little bit, although it is very plain. And the church is maintaining the cemetery, and one of the activities that we will have on Sunday is, the plan is to have a large blow-up of the cemetery, and you will be able to put a pin, if you have a relative, if you can find them, and it'll be labeled so you can tell who's buried where. And we're hoping that people will pin the markers that are related to them. We have a group called the Friends of Lauer Hill that is kind of like a, no, I'm not gonna call them a booster group, because we don't want them to become a booster group. They are supporters of the Lauer Hill. Many of them are people who have relatives that attended the church at one time or another, or who have relatives that are buried in the cemetery, or they're just really interested in the Lauer Hill story. So they will be there helping us on Sunday celebrate the open house. Saturday, August 5th, from 5:00 to 7:00, we'll be hosting an ice cream social in North Park. And this ice cream will be provided by the First Christian Church, so you know it's going to be good ice cream, okay? There will be musical entertainment, and there will also be an opportunity to tour the History Manor, okay? And this will be from 5:00 to 7:00, so the ghosts probably won't be too operative at that time, although you never know. September 30th is our hobo dinner at the depot. This year, we're going to be featuring a presentation by an author from Toledo who's written a book about depots and the railroads in northwestern Ohio. We're gonna try that and see how that works out. He's an excellent speaker, and it's an excellent book, we have it in our gift shop. Okay, so in addition to all these things, we're starting a major effort to preserve the History Manor, that building on Monroe Street. We know when we moved to the new museum, there was concern in the community about what was going to happen to that building. We got a lot of questions about that. We want to assure everyone that we're committed to maintaining and using that building, but it needs help. So we're launching a program to try and do some preservation of that building. I want to give you a real quick timeline on that. History Manor was built in 1868 as a three-story building to serve as Wausau's first high school. A lot of people don't know this stuff, okay? It was closed in 1897 due to a sinking foundation. That problem hasn't gone away over all these years, okay? So that's one of the issues that we need to deal with. The third floor was removed, and it was converted into a duplex by a gentleman named Frank Mercer soon after that 1897 date. In 1903, two of his boarders, doctors E.A. Mirbaugh and J.W. Fauster, bought the building, okay? And then in 1905, they were instrumental in opening the first county hospital in that building, okay? It's interesting how they did it, all the doctors in the county formed an association, and they put their money into setting up that hospital. So it was run by that group of doctors. 1930, they moved to the Detwiler Building, so it was no longer a hospital. It housed indigenous families during the Depression and early into World War II. In 1949, Reese and Ruth Campbell turned it into four apartments. And then in 1969, Ruth Campbell donated it to the Historical Society for a museum. And in 2018, we renamed it the History Manor when we moved out to the new museum. To ensure the use of this historic structure into the future, we need to upgrade the HVAC system. The gutters and soffits, they're undersized, and they're allowing water to come out and go down and penetrate around the foundation of the building, and that's causing some of the same issues that they had way back when. We were able to receive, through the good auspices of Representative Hoops and Derek Maron, Senator Gavron at the time, and Rob McCully, we received $50,000 grant through the state capital budget, the last capital budget. That's a matching grant, so we need to provide $50,000 in local funding to match that grant before we can get it. The other stipulation is that we need to spend our $50,000, and then they provide theirs, okay? So we have a donor who has pledged to match up to $25,000 of that 50, okay? That's a big commit for us, and we appreciate it very much. So we still need to raise $25,000. So I'm not here to ask for money, okay? What I'm here to ask is that if you, or anyone that you know, would be interested in helping us preserve that building, because we know there was a lot of interest and concern about it, we give you an opportunity to help us do what we need to do to make sure that we're able to keep that building. We use it for storage, and that's part of the reason why we're very concerned about the HVAC issues. We have to be very selective on what we can put in there, because we just can't have moisture issues that are there. So it has to be pretty much just concrete objects. We can't keep paper or clothing or anything like that there. And we are using it for programming. We have our tees there, and it is available for tours by appointment. And if we are successful in this campaign, the next step will be doing some more renovation to the facility itself, and bringing it back to what it had been in the past, okay? So, finish up here. That ice cream social is going to be our kickoff for our fundraiser to begin our real campaign to try and attract some funding, to make that $25,000. I've given you a handout that explains the project of what we're trying to do to the building. I've also given you an invitation to a pre-construction tour at 3:30 on August 5th, where invited people will be taken through the building and shown in detail what we're trying to do with the building and this project. After that, during the ice cream social, people will be able to come in and tour, but we're not necessarily focusing on, but we want them to see what needs to be done, and obviously be willing to make contributions also, but this pre-construction thing will be more detailed. So we would hope that if it fits your schedule, you'll be able to come and take part in that as well. That's my summary on our activities, except for, we have two exciting things going on out at the museum. We just opened a brand-new exhibit in the main gallery in the center called Meet Me at the Fair, and it's all about the Fulton County Fair, but way beyond that. As John was doing his discovery work on putting that together, we found that we had artifacts in our collection that people had donated from the 1893 World's Columbian Exhibition, the celebration of the 400th anniversary of Columbus's discovery of America. People had been there from this area, and they donated things, souvenirs and things from there. We also found things that people had donated from a variety of World's Fairs. So the initial section of this display covers those other things other than the Fulton County Fair, and then we take you back into time over the Fulton County Fair as well. So, and one of the neat things is, if some of you may remember a gentleman named Lyle Speis, who was the egg agent for Fulton County a number of years ago, in the 50s and the early 60s, he took 8-millimeter films of the fair and the junior fair, and his daughter had them digitized video into video and donated that to us. And so John's taken clippings from those videos and linked them together, and so you can sit there and see if you can recognize a lot of different people. People are having fun doing that. In addition, we interviewed a number of people about what their memories of the Fulton County Fair are. So it's a, this will run through December, or no, excuse me, August of 2024, so it's gonna be up for awhile, but I hope you'll get a chance to come out and take a look at it. The other special exhibit is about the 150th anniversary of Fayette's founding, and we went, it's this summer, and they're gonna be celebrating. We went through our collection and found as many things as we could about Fayette, and made a special collection in the Worthington Industries Gallery on Fayette. There's some really neat stuff in there, and I had no idea that things were in Fayette, that there were, okay? The other thing, two things, my favorite pieces in the collection that people probably don't know we have. We have a flashlight that was made by Fulton Industries for the Apollo project, and it is on display. All the Apollo astronauts carried one of those in a pouch on their spacesuit, and they had them stowed throughout the lunar landers. The one that Armstrong took to the moon is in the Smithsonian. We have one of them now here on loan from Johnson Space Center. We're going to be negotiating with them to see if we just can't keep it here permanently, because it's home, and it needs to be here. The other piece that we have that I think is one of the coolest, we have the footlocker from James Howard, who was Dresden Howard's father. He used this footlocker in the War of 1812, and it was donated to us by the McClellan family. They found it in the house out in Winemieg after they were digging through all kinds of stuff there. It's just a wooden box, but it was his footlocker from the War of 1812. So I just think that's a special, special piece. I thank you for the opportunity to share. Again, I invite you all to come out, visit us at the museum, and take advantage of these other opportunities that we have to share with the community. Thanks for your time.
Thank you for coming, and thank you for sharing all of this stuff, because I really do appreciate all of the efforts that you guys do, but to hear that you're reaching out now, more people are coming in, I think that's, that's really nice for them.
Well, for years and years and years, unfortunately, we were known as the Wausau Museum. We are not. We are the Fulton County Historical Society.
Right.
And we represent all of Fulton County. In fact, we've started doing our haunted history tours around the area, and this October, we will be in Archibald, doing a history tour of Archibald. So that's what we're about, and that's what we're trying to do. But again, we appreciate the support that we receive from the city also.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. Okay, next, we have oath of office for two fire department personnel. Chief?
Brian, and your family, Tony, would you like to come up into the center?
Sure.
Great. Shoot.
Historically, the fire service is rich in history and deep in traditions. In our country, we have well over 200 years of these traditions that have brought us to the present time. Having been established in 1862, the Wausau Fire Department is no different. As with tradition, our fire department still uses the sounding of the bell. For our comrades that have passed, and we embrace the sound of bagpipes as they sound in our gatherings.
With that history and tradition in mind, I would like to continue our tradition within the Wausau Fire Department. As members of the department, we shall give each probationary firefighter an American flag. Every morning across this country, a firefighter raises the flag at their station, and at the end of the day, takes it down and folds it. As a new full-time member of the department, this flag is to be raised on your next shift. This flag shall then be kept for you over the span of your career at the Wausau Fire Department. On your last day, you will once again raise and lower your flag. That flag will be presented to you to signify the completion of your duty, your tour of duty. If the unthinkable should happen, and a brother or sister falls in the line of duty, their family will know that this flag was last touched by their loved one, doing what they truly love, being a firefighter.
Thank you, sir. Now the mayor will read the votes. You guys had your things?
Now that they have the flags and the pens, I'm gonna ask you to raise your right hand, and I'm gonna ask you to state your name together at the same time, okay? Aye?
Aye. Tony.
Thank you. Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the State of Ohio?
The Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And the Charter of the City of Wausau.
And the Charter of the City of Wausau.
And I will faithfully?
And I will faithfully?
Discharge the duties?
Discharge the duties.
Of firefighter?
Of firefighter.
For the City of Wausau.
For the City of Wausau.
State of Ohio?
State of Ohio.
To the best of my abilities.
To the best of my abilities.
Appreciate it.
Welcome aboard.
Congratulations.
Yep, yep.
And again, congratulations.
Yep, thank you. Have a good weekend.
I think so.
Yep, yep. I'll come back and get you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Welcome and congratulations.
Thank you. Thanks for sharing with us.
At the fire department, we have an oath of office for our Assistant Chief from the Police Department. Yeah. When you're tall, you gotta be careful.
I'll have you raise your right hand and repeat that.
I'm Nathan Hartsack.
Aye, Nathan Hartsack.
Do solemnly swear?
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States?
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the State of Ohio?
And the State of Ohio.
That I will faithfully, honestly, and impartially?
That I will faithfully, honestly, and impartially?
Discharge the duties of the office?
Discharge the duties of the office.
Of Assistant Chief of Police?
Of Assistant Chief of Police.
For the City of Wausau?
For the City of Wausau.
State of Ohio?
State of Ohio.
During my continuance and set office?
During my continuance of set office.
Thank you, guys, I appreciate it, and it's nice to see all of you come forward and your families here, thank you for coming. So, we're gonna move on, he needs to leave very soon, so if I feel like I'm rushing, it's because I am. He has another council meeting to get to. So, department head reports. Chief Castle?
Nothing new, we did have a structured fire Friday night, a vehicle fire late Friday night, all went well. We were assisted by Marcy and Delta, no issues.
Chief Chitlin, welcome back.
I just wanted to welcome Nathan Hartsack to our department and our city. Very excited to have him become a part of the police department, it's a huge, huge gift for us, so I'm very excited for that. I want to pass along, our range upgrade has been completed, our storage shed and pavilion are all complete, and the cement markers that we had planned are out there. We just need some grass, but it's not the right time to plant for that, so that's definitely a nice upgrade for our facilities. And also wanted to let counsel know Rebecca Roller has been offered and accepted the position of personal assistant to the chief of police, and she will be starting Monday the 24th.
Does she come from another department, like another, an area department, or just?
She was working for the runway county prosecutor's office as a victim advocate.
Okay, thank you. Okay, great, thank you. Keith is on a boat, heading to Alaska, or in Alaska, and Jamie is gone, Kevin, do you have anything?
I have nothing to report for Mr. McWaters.
Okay, and he just got home today, correct?
I believe so, yes.
Yeah, alrighty, so everyone's coming back from vacation, it is the month. Any questions at all for, I'm sorry, for Kevin, or Kevin or Kevin? Alright, thank you. Let's see.
You know what, I was going to say the fireworks went really well.
Yeah.
From my perspective, anyway, so thanks for all the effort that went into that, for both of your departments.
I'm always the one that has to take all of the chairs down prior to, and then put them in my car, and wait in line as my family walks home, gets home before me, but I'm always amazed at how well the traffic flows out of there, thank you, please.
It was a really good year for traffic this year.
It was, and we closed early, like the earliest we've ever had to shut down a park. And hopefully, you got that cars around the corridor of the park, to see how many cars park out on 13 and all around. And hopefully you got that cars around the corridor of the park to see how many cars park out on 13 and all around because that's, that's quite a scene to see all those cars parked out there watching the fireworks, so. All right, good. Got to go?
I do.
Alrighty.
Like the mayor said, I've got another council meeting this evening, so.
No speeding.
Stop that a little early.
Which one are you going to?
Striker.
Okay.
Drive careful.
Um, committee reports. Scott was not here, so you all got the tree commission. I don't think there was any action. Let's see, Laura Camp introduced the guest, Robert Flores. He's a local arborist and he has been in the tree care industry for 34 years and he's kind of interested. Not that they were looking for anybody, but I think he just wants to add his input of what, his knowledge of that. So, she introduced him and then John Alexander gave an update on city trees. The big elm tree at North Park and South Park are not doing well and potentially will need to come down. The committee also wanted to give thank yous to everybody who, for the Tree City USA event of thanks and all of, all of the people that partook in that. And then the wildfire flower project at Homecoming Park went really well except for rain. Seeds don't grow without rain, so hopefully that'll be something that they can redo again. And the birds like seed that doesn't get into the ground. So, hopefully the next time we'll get some rain on that. But other than that, that was all. There was no action on the tree committee. So, let's see. This is hard for me because it's front and back. Our printer is not working very well. So, let's see. Next, what do we have? Resolutions. Let's move into that. We do not have enough to go into any emergency tonight, so we'll just read these out as resolutions to be voted on tonight. Resolution 2023-9 is a resolution authorizing the mayor to sign the quote from Zoll Medical Corporation dated July 12, 2023, for the purchase of supplies for the fire department. And this will go under our first reading.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second. Motion to place resolution 2023-9 on first reading, moved by Counselor Schneider and seconded by Counselor Heising. Any discussion?
Chief, are these automated CPR machines?
They are. It's the next generation.
All right, thank you.
Counselor Schneider?
Yes.
Counselor Heising?
Yes.
Counselor Chamberlain?
Yes.
Counselor Stickley?
Yes.
Four yeas, zero nays. Motion carries.
Second reading of legislation is a resolution 2023-7, a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an amendment to the collective bargaining agreement with the Ohio Patrolman's Benevolent Association Patrol Officers Union. And this will go on second reading.
I move.
Second motion for resolution 2023-7?
Motion to place resolution 2023-7 on second reading, moved by Counselor Heising and seconded by Counselor Chamberlain. Any discussion? Counselor Heising?
Yes.
Counselor Chamberlain?
Yes.
Counselor Stickley?
No.
Counselor Schneider?
No.
Two yeas, two nays?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay. B, second reading, is a resolution 2023-8, a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute an amendment to the collective bargaining agreement with the Ohio Patrolman's Benevolent Association Full-Time Dispatchers and Records Technician. This will be second reading.
I move.
I will second the second reading.
Motion to place resolution 2023-8 on second reading, moved by Counselor Heising and seconded by Counselor Chamberlain. Any discussion? Counselor Heising?
Yes.
Counselor Chamberlain?
Yes.
Counselor Stickley?
No.
Counselor Schneider?
No.
Mayor votes yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, we have nothing under third reading, anything under new business. All I have is the Homecoming coming up and it's always an active time around town and hopefully all of us will get up there at one time or another to enjoy the festivities and hope that we have some good weather to go along with it. It's either hot or rainy, so hopefully we'll have a good one this time. Anything under old business?
Is the fiber optic company still in town?
Last I talked to Keith, right, was the day that he left, that they were pretty much wrapped up. I haven't seen any.
They've still got.
Vehicles. Where, but are they, are they still digging? I thought the digging had stopped.
They had some digging this past weekend on Lindt.
Yeah, it was.
Was that cleanup digging? It was new digging? Okay, because he thought they were supposed to be done.
I don't know if it was something that was.
Soon. All I'm knowing is the cable on my, is not going right now, so I'm trying to figure out what that's about too. Yes.
Under old business, John was at Rotary and was asking, but to be brief to everybody, the monument at North Park was voted by the city council to have it restored. And we're restoring the policeman, fireman's monument also. It should be this week or next week, starting on it.
I'm not, I didn't quite hear what you were saying, but.
I said at Rotary, you was asking about North Park's monument?
Right.
So city council has already voted to restore it. And the restoration should happen possibly this week or next week, as well as the fireman's monument out front to be restored.
Anything on when they're supposed to come in?
Keith was just, Keith was just saying that it should be.
It's scheduled. He just wasn't sure on the dates yet, but it is scheduled.
Yeah. So I just wanted you to know, John, that the monument's going to get redone.
Yes, I was, well, that was, Von did a nice presentation.
He did.
At Rotary and it actually dovetailed very nicely. It's, it's really very nice what's happening in that little neighborhood right now.
Yeah.
What's been done with that park, with the new playground equipment and the fix-up with that and then also working with that monument and then we're trying to do what we can do with our building, so, yes.
It's been a very busy park.
Yes, it has been. It's become a very busy park. And it has a great canopy of trees that makes it even better for families to be in.
It's a great setting for that ice cream social.
I got it on the calendar. Okay.
I don't know if it's being their old, maybe I should have brought up what are new, but I've been getting complaints about Biddle Park, the upkeep of it.
It's being, they're taking care of it. In fact, they've already started with the weed whacking and stuff and I know Keith briefed you guys at the committee, the whole meeting, a little bit about why it wasn't underneath the fence and things like that, but that is getting taken care of. If you look around the trees and every, the buildings, all of those were taken care of. It was just under the fence and the reasoning is that they used, what is it? To kill the weeds underneath. Yeah, it's round up, but, and then after it's dead, then you go and you do that. But I think that looks horrible as well. I'd like to see them cut down and they, they pretty much took care of it. So they were told to go make sure those are all down. And the ones over by the railroad track in town are the same way. They're very brown. They're dying, but it's, they still need to go down, in my opinion, so. Hopefully that'll be taken care of. Anything else? Okay, I guess we just need a motion to approve the bills.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion to approve and pay the bills as presented, moved by Counselor Schneider and seconded by Counselor Stickley. Any discussion? Counselor Schneider?
Yes.
Counselor Stickley?
Yes.
Counselor Heising?
Yes.
Counselor Chamberlain?
Let's pay the bills.
Four yeas, zero nays. Motion carries.
Motion for adjournment?
So who?
Second. Motion to adjourn, moved by Counselor Chamberlain and seconded by Counselor Heising. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.